...out to, you know, interested parties as well as a progress update template. And we really want to be able to, as we do projects in the downtown master plan, be able to easily update that and share that with the public. So lastly, the timeline, and the project will be completed in four phases. So our first phase will be the initial data collection that'll go from January to March. Phase two will be research, analysis, and public engagement, and that'll be from March to May. Phase three will be completing the draft of the master plan, and that'll be May through July. And then finally, phase four will be that final master plan development as well as the adoption from you guys as the Board of Commissioners. There is a larger timeline that I included in your packet that includes a lot more detail on what'll be going on in those, in those phases. So the action that we need from you guys tonight is to authorize Richard to execute the documents for the contract, but I'll pause and open the floor for any questions that you guys might have.
Comments or questions from the board? Very well. Can I get a motion to approve the downtown master plan contract?
Motion to approve the downtown master plan contract with Boudreaux, Boudreaux Group Incorporated and authorize the interim town manager to execute the necessary documents.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nope. This motion carries.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay. Six.
Town reports.
Alrighty. Next up is leadership reports. In interim town manager, Richard Hicks, any reports today?
Time to give just one quick update. What started as a special meeting of the general assembly to provide funds for the western part of state got approved, but it also included some different policies and they're just stripping power from the governor and some other people. But it did include, or it takes away the town's ability to initiate down zoning on pieces of property. It passed both the senate and the house, and of course, it was vetoed by the governor. The senate last week overrode that, and it was scheduled in the, I believe, in the house for, I live one day last week, and it got calendared for Monday, then it switched to Tuesday, and I believe now it's scheduled for Wednesday of this week. But the expectation is still that it, you know, the actual veto will be overridden by the, um, house. But there is a lot of activity from the planning association, league, I mean, there's a, some others possibly on, going back in the long session, maybe modifying on that. But the expectation is right now that it will pass and your authority to move forward with that will not be available anymore, so. But as it changes, we'll keep you updated, and I'm sure, you know, some of you are following that, so.
Good to know. Something to look out for in the future. Thank you.
I just have one question for something else. I noticed that the planning board has not had a meeting the last few months. It's been canceled. I was wondering, I don't know what's on the agenda for January, but I was wondering if there isn't anything for them to hear in January, if we could schedule for them some training, like maybe a class through school government or something like that, that they can do during that time? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dina Sabinski, something happen this weekend that you might want to tell us about? Or are you going to talk about stuff coming up?
I got a few things to tell you about. I'm Dina Sabinski, you're Park Rec Director. I want to say thank you to all of our sponsors and activity entries for the senior Christmas luncheon. We had a great luncheon with the seniors on Saturday, and then our Christmas parade was on Sunday. We were blessed with great weather and lots of people, lots of smiles, so I appreciate that. Upcoming this weekend, we have Reeds Across America. That is our partnership with Arlington Cemetery, and we have it at our South Side Cemetery at 12:00 PM on Saturday, the 14th. And then we have our last event of the season is the Wax Saw menorah lighting, and that is December the 26th at 5:30 near East North Main, near the Wall of Honor. So I hope to see you there. My Wax Saw BOC, you've got those informations in front of you. And then also, I wanted to show our lovely listeners online that the next program guide is out and ready for fun, so please check it out. It is also online, lots of cool, fun program activities, and then of course, the rest of the events for our budget year that ends in June, and hope to see you out and make friends with your neighbors. A few additional things I would like to give you a heads up on. We are in the middle phase of the nonprofit for the Friends of Parks and Rec, and we are super excited. We're going to go into our interview process, sorry, long day. And we would hope to have those presented in the springtime, so we're super excited about that. Also, I wanted to give you a heads up, the Learning Center, we're at the end of the understanding all the ins and outs with our consultant, and that's going to go out to bid in January, and I'm going to give you a cheat sheet on that soon, so y'all have the ins and outs on that as well. And also, in your packet, there are some art initiatives that we are doing in the downtown corridor with the sculpture walk, the butterfly, the tiny art, and then the great partnership with our downtown association with the crosswalks. So we're super excited about all these cool art initiatives coming up. Any questions?
Questions? Nope.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Business Development Director, Ashley Newell.
I think Dina and I share a brain sometimes, so I was going to talk about the Call for Artists, too. So Dina mentioned our Call for Artists are four different projects downtown. We published that on our downtown Wax Saw Facebook page and Instagram, as well as our blog last week. So if anyone is interested, or if you know any artists, please send it to them. You can find it on our website at downtownwaxaw.com or Facebook and Instagram. Now I want to talk all about holidays. So holidays downtown are very important. Our downtown Wax Saw Association is hosting a gift wrapping station at the Duncan McDonald House every Saturday leading up to Christmas. So you can come see us this Saturday, September, or December 14th, or next Saturday, December 21st. We're there from 12:30 to 4:00 PM, and we can help wrap your gifts. Last weekend, I got to wrap a broom, which is the most creative thing that I have ever wrapped. We also have some downtown gift cards and new downtown merchandise that we have for sale at the Duncan McDonald House. These sweatshirts, socks, and dog bandanas are our merch this year. You can buy them with us at the McDonald House, but they're also on our website, and the sale for these items all goes back into the Downtown Wax Saw Association and projects and initiatives that we do downtown. And lastly, I just want to mention the importance of shopping local this holiday season. the sale for these items all goes back into the downtown Waxaw Association and projects and initiatives that we do downtown. And lastly, I just want to mention the importance of shopping local this holiday season. This season is the most important time for our small businesses in downtown, and it's often critical for them achieving their year-end goals. So I just want to remind you that your purchases make a huge impact. Our small businesses contribute significantly to our economy here in Waxaw, and an average of 68 cents of every dollar is reinvested locally when you spend that at a local business. It also creates jobs. We have over eight, almost 800 employees that work downtown, so your shopping really creates a ripple effect in affecting those local people that work in our, in our small businesses. And lastly, shopping local supports community character. Our unique character downtown is really formed by our business owners and our employees that are serving you when you go shopping. When you're shopping local, you're building that personal connection, and those people really care about you and what you're buying. So just a reminder, buy your gifts locally, eat locally this holiday season. And as always, if you need help shopping, I'm happy to help. If you need gift ideas, come let me know. I'm in the stores all the time, so thank you and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Any comments from the board at this time? All right. Well, my only comment is Merry Christmas, everybody. This is a very special time of year for everyone, and I think it's a great time to reconnect with family and friends. We'll have a, this is our last meeting of the year. We won't see y'all again until the second week of January, so we will take our time off and enjoy that as best we can. But in the meantime, everybody have a great Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned.